Audience, please rise. Scouts attention. Color guard advance. Scout salute. Color guard post the colors. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Two. Please stay standing for the National Anthem.
Well, good evening, everyone. You know, it's, uh...I always say whenever we get a...all the seats in council chambers filled up, that it's a great day, and today is no exception. In fact, today is extra special because we're welcoming everyone to our Second Annual Veterans Appreciation Program. It was a great way to commence this event. I want to thank the Boy Scout troops, eighty-eight and eight-eighty-eight, and Nathan Proctor on the trumpet. Where's Nathan? Let me ask you something. I hear very nicely. I hear the National Anthem's very hard to sing. Is it very hard to perform on the trumpet?
Well, yeah, right now.
Well, you did a spectacular job. Thank you very much, and so did you scouts as well. Today's a very special celebration because we're here to honor our veterans. I'm proud to be a veteran. I'm proud to have served, and actually, I'm proud to serve on a governing body that has veterans on it. We're here to honor achievements and especially their devotion to our country, and we are live-streaming this to allow those who were not able to make it the opportunity to still be part of another nice occasion here in the city of Gardner. On the eleventh hour of the eleventh day of the eleventh month, the Great War, as they called it, ended, and Armistice Day began. And, you know, from that time on, we were honoring the...those who fought and fell during World War I. But in nineteen fifty-four, when President Eisenhower, as great a cansin as we'll ever know, was in the White House at the behest of veteran service organizations, we changed that. The Korean War was over. The Second World War was over. And now, we decided to honor all of our veterans and not just those from World War I. And...the city started this event, and I really have to counsel...woman Christina Harrison's not here. And we expect her back next week sometime, and we look forward to it. But some of the things that we've done for the...in the city for our veterans, I have to credit Christina Harrison. She's very active in our American Legion chapter here. She was very instrumental in getting our military reference page up and online so that if there's a veteran in town that needs someplace to go to find some directions, maybe for assistance, the city of Gardner provides for that. And I have to say that I think this was...this event, along with some staff members, was her idea. And, you know, I believe the greatest demonstration of our gratitude for the freedom that you have given us through all of our service and goodwill towards one another. And I want...I would hope everybody tomorrow will exercise some freedom by getting out and voting as well. So on behalf of the city, I want to say thank you to all of you that are in attendance, and especially the veterans, and to those who are here in spirit. Thank you for your service, and to your families for their sacrifice. And thank you for attending and allowing us to celebrate you and show you that we remember and will never forget the commitment you made to our country. And with that, I'm going to welcome Justice Johnston...Johnson up to perform a musical number.
All right, we're gonna be singing. We're gonna be leaning assault in "America the Beautiful", so if you know it, don't let me sing it alone. I mean, thank you for your service. Oh, beautiful, four spacious skies, foreenders rain of grain. For purple mountain majesties above the rooted land. America, America, God shed his grace on thee. And crown thy good with brotherhood, from sea to shining sea. Oh, beautiful, for heroes proved in live by the strife. And more than self, the country loved, in a single life. America, 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 God shed his grace on thee. And crown thy good with brotherhood, from sea to shining sea. And crown thy good with brotherhood, from sea to shining sea. Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Cheryl Harrison Lee, city administrator. Today, we honor our veterans and their families. You are our heroes because your sacrifices have afforded us the freedom we enjoy today. So thank you for your commitment, your bravery, and your service. I applaud you, as does this entire city. This evening, I'd like to share a story with you. It's one you may have heard before about a soldier and his coin. Before the United States entry into World War I, American volunteers from diverse backgrounds filled the newly-formed Flying Squadrons. Those pilots were excited to use technology while serving their country. This excitement drew people, and youth of America were stirred into action. To commemorate the excitement, one of the wealthier lieutenants created bronze medallions for the pilots in his squadron to serve as memento of their teamwork. Rumor has it, they were gold-plated and finely detailed. The pilots treasured the gift and kept them closely guarded during their travels. One young pilot placed his medallion in a small pouch and wore it around his neck. As his unit made his way across Europe, one of the aircrafts sustained damage by ground fire, forcing the pilot to land on enemy territory. Captured by the German army, the pilot's belongings were confiscated, and he was sent to a prisoner-of-war facility. The pilot's captures, however, missed one small detail. The pilot managed to retain his medallion in that pouch around his neck. As the soldier was being transported to the prisoner-of-war camp, the transport group stopped at an occupied village to rest. Overnight, the British raided the village. Oh, this was an opportunity for the young pilot to escape. However, he was without personal identification. He succeeded in avoiding the German patriots by dawning civilian attire, and he reached the front lines. Eventually, he was met by Allied French soldiers, but soon realized he still was not out of danger. The French soldiers, skeptics, they demanded proof of identity, having been warned of saboteurs dressed as local citizens. With all of his information in enemy hands, how could he prove that he was an American pilot? So as he stood facing execution, the soldier pulled the medallion from around his neck. Recognizing the insignia, one of the French captors said, "Wait a minute", and he called for a stay of his execution just long enough to confirm the soldier's identity. As such, the soldier's life was spared. Upon returning home, news of the soldier's dilemma spread, and it became a tradition that soldiers carried their medallions at all times. So what began as a simple gift among teamsters has become a proud military tradition. Today, ladies and gentlemen, boys and girls, this gift is known as the Challenge Coin. While some may debate the story or its origin, what's not debatable is that this coin is recognized by all as a symbol of unity, pride, and teamwork among the bravest of our society, our servicemen and women. So in keeping with that tradition, tonight, we'd like to present you with a coin from the city of Gardner as a symbol of our gratitude for your fearless service. And at this time, I'd ask the members of the governing body to please join me as we present to our veterans a symbol of gratitude for their service.
Good evening. As we call your name, please come forward to receive your gift. And once you receive your gift, please take a moment for a picture with the council members. Corey Anderson, Army, two years. Corey Anderson? There he is. And then if you get a picture with the...you get the picture with the mayor? Mike Hutton, Army, two years. Scott Jones, Army, two years. Jim Shields, Army, two years. Jesse Brown, Army, three years. Dell Anderson, Navy, four years. Let's give Dell another round while he's coming down. Jeff Barber, Army, four years. Okay, we haven't seen Jeff. Okay. Norman Crowder, Air Force, four years. Dean Duro, Navy, four years. Dennis Liss, Air Force, four years. Galen Taylor, Navy, four years. Ronald York, Navy, four years. Brian Templeton, Army, four years. Glenn Boner, Air Force, five years.
Glenn's daughter is the best finance director I know.
Rob Jokim, Navy, five years. Abe Rivera, Marine Corps, six years. Heather Beebaut, Army, eight years. Tim Conley, Air Force, eight years. Jerry Templemeyer, Navy, eight years. And do we have a Joe Burnhire, Army, eight years? Joe Herbert, Army, eleven years. Steven Armstrong, thirteen years. Mozzella Maybon, Air Force, thirteen years. Eric Sellers, Army, sixteen years. James Simpson, twenty-four years. Uh-oh, I'm in trouble. I forgot Danny, Danny Mindon, twenty years. Scott Miller, Army, twenty-nine years. Are there any veterans here that we did not recognize that would like to be recognized? Stay, stay up and, come on up. Alan, well Alan, I heard you, I was gonna do something special for you because you're still serving, aren't you? Yeah, you're still serving, he's at thirty years, so let's go ahead and give Alan some. Yeah, that's a no, you didn't mess me up, it's fine. We're gonna get to him. Go ahead and come on up. Say your name, sir. What's your name, sir?
Rick Burrows.
Rick Burrows.
Seven years, Air Force, fourteen years, Kansas City, New Orleans.
Nice. Go ahead and come on up. Stay close right here, sir, right here. If you're still currently serving, please stand up because we all want to recognize you and congratulate you. Before we end our presentation, we want to recognize our veterans who served in the military and continue to serve the citizens of Gardner as members of the governing body. Mayor Chris Morrow, Navy. Christina Harrison, Air Force. Rich Melton, Army. And Lee Moore, Air Force. That concludes our presentation of gifts, thank you. And now, we're gonna have a selection.
All right, here we got America, or God Bless America. You don't have to sing along, sing along. God bless America. Lord, I'll stand beside her and guide her. Through the light with love from above. From the mountains to the prairies, to the ocean. When we fall, God bless America. My home, sweet home. From the mountains to the prairies, to the ocean. When we fall, God bless America. God bless America, my home, sweet home. Let's go, and just for America, for our veterans, let's give a hand for them.
Well, that was fantastic. And I'm glad that I was sitting in the front row, so none of you have to endure what the people that sit in front of me at church have to when the mood strikes me. This is gonna conclude our event, and I want to thank everybody for attending. I want you all to please take some time and get some cake and punch and goodies out in the foyer. And I'm gonna take a minute and tell a little story. Okay, so we had some Navy guys in here. Any of the Navy guys, can you tell me what it is that they always said the toughest job in the Navy was? Well, when I served in the eighties, it was toughest job in the Navy was Navy wife. And honestly, that extends to Navy spouses because we had a couple of female veterans in here this evening. And not just spouses, but children and parents. You know, you guys are the support system that make it so that people like me and all the veterans here are able to go serve. Saturday, I was out at Divine Mercy Parish. The Saint Anne Sewing Circle was having a, they were giving away blankets to some of the veterans. And I was sitting with a gal, and we were leaving at the same time, and she stopped me in the hallway outside afterwards and thanked me for my service. And she mentioned that she was retired, a retired nurse from the VA, the Veterans Administration. So, working at the VA hospital. And I said, "Well, ma'am, you know, you were a registered nurse. You could've got a job anyplace. The fact that you retired from the VA, thank you for your service." And her, like I right now, I'm, you know, she got a little emotional about it. But it's not just those of us that serve, it's everybody that cares about us and loves us and the people that we don't even know that benefit from the blanket of freedom that we provide. So with that, I'm gonna say, God bless y'all. God bless your families. And God bless the United States of America. And have some punch.
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
I haven't looked yet. It is still running. It's just...
This is Charles. Can you hear me okay?
Yep.
I think this is going to be all right. If you can hear me, you sound pretty clear. There's still a little sound group left over, so...
I found out.
You are on live in the room.
You sound fine. So do you want to remain on the line for the next few minutes until the meeting starts, or do you want them to call you back?
I can remain on the line, I'm fine.
Okay.
Executive session. The presentation that's not on here, but it's a distinct possibility that is going to happen, so... Okay, so you guys can help me with that?
Yes.
Okay. So they'll just have to take the number and do it from there. They can do that. They don't need my assistance to do that. Yeah. 913, I assume. All right. I don't know if they will or not do this, but it's very possible that it's... We don't have another call agenda, but they can choose to go into it for the time that's... Okay. Yeah. I have, oh, I have to worry about it, because they have to vote to go in. I have to worry about it, because they have to vote to go in that way. There's not a forum without... But we can, I can talk to Ryan. Let's talk to Ryan about it. I mean, that's... I can tell him it's going to be easier if we can just get it done. So please call in. And in case we go through, like, the session, we'll just want to call it in there.
We all will get overtaken by our schedules on here. The good habits.
Yeah, you're right.
No, he's in the dam for the last campaign.
Because my calendar is much, much longer.
So if you go. Yes. Either that or I'm called.
I mean, what are we doing to get Councilman Moore on the phone?
He is on the phone already.
He's on the phone already. Hey, Lee. Hello.
Hey, you're there.
I am here.
Congratulations.
Hey, advantage, hey.
Hey, I'm going to take your cookies home and eat them, so just so you know. You got veterans' cookies, so I don't want them to go to waste.
And really nice challenge coins.
Yes, they are very nice.
You better get Charles, because there's wires in it, under it, around it.
Did you tell Lee that he has to tell us if he drops off in case?
Well, I'm going to check in with him as we get past each individual to make sure that he's still there. Because if you drop off blindly, the meeting's over.
Yeah, we don't have Christie.
Oh, Christie's not there? No. No, actually, that was a sad passing. Talk about that in a minute. Yeah, okay.
Okay, thanks. Hi, good thing Sunday was thinking of that.
Thanks, gentlemen.
We were all a little late. Amy, we're on.
Yes.
Good evening, everyone. It's a couple minutes after seven. I hate to start late, but we're going to call Gardner City Council to order. I'm going to invite everybody in attendance to please stand and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the life of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, good evening. We've got Councilman Moore joining us telephonically this evening. Say hi, Lee. Hello, everybody. So, and unfortunately, we're going to start this evening's meeting. There's been a sad passing in the, you know, for a family member of our city's family, a member of the governing body. And Christina Harrison's sister, Heather Call, her youngest sister, perished last week in a tragic fire. I'm going to read a little proclamation of condolence for Christina and her family. Whereas Councilwoman Christina Harrison, as for more than seven years, rendered faithful and honorable public service to the citizens of the city of Gardner in her duties as city council member, and whereas Almighty God in His infinite wisdom has called Heather Call, sister of Christina Harrison, to her eternal reward, and whereas the sad calling from our midst of Heather Call leaves a lasting vacancy in the family of Christina Harrison and a memory that will be, that will forever be cherished. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the members of the governing body of the city of Gardner, Kansas, on behalf of the citizens of Gardner, extend to Christina Harrison and her family our heartfelt sympathy and sincere regrets on their profound loss of Heather Call, and be it further resolved that in recognition of Councilwoman Harrison's service to the citizens of the city of Gardner, that the governing body pays sincere tribute to the memory of Heather Call by spreading upon the official records of the Gardner City Council a copy of this proclamation of condolence. And witness whereof I have hereunto set my hand and caused the seal of the city of Gardner, Kansas, to be a... Kansas, to be affixed the sixth day of November, 2017. Next item is much hempier. We, I'm going to, here's the interesting thing, the city's won another award. Now, this is not an uncommon occurrence, we've got a fantastic staff here that does great work day after day. When the rest of us are doing our regular jobs, they're busy working for the citizens of Gardner. But Healthy KC is a partnership of the Greater Kansas City Chamber of Commerce, Blue KC, and a number of regional health and wellness leaders in an effort to advocate for real solutions that help shape individual organizational and environmental health changes through a collaborative, community-wide partnership that aims to create a culture of health and wellness in Greater Kansas City. The city of Gardner is a recipient of the 2017 Healthy KC Silver Award. This award recognizes organizations for innovation and excellence in promoting a culture of health in the workplace across our pillars of health, nutrition, physical activity, tobacco cessation, and work-life integration. The city of Gardner has made the health and well-being of staff members a priority. The Wellness Committee promotes staff involvement and provides various offerings throughout the year designed to educate employees about the importance of healthy living. Additionally, the city of Gardner has developed a seven-level wellness program with monetary incentives designed to help staff maintain an optimal, optimal level of wellness in order to live a higher quality of life. The Healthy KC Silver Award will be proudly displayed as a symbol of the support of and efforts made by the governing body of the city of Gardner and dedicated professional staff of the city of Gardner towards promoting a culture of health and wellness. Now, I know that we don't actually have the award in hand yet. We will award that to our human resource manager, Alan Abramowitz, when we receive that. Cheryl, there were only how many cities in the metro area that received this distinction?
So, we're in company with the city of Olathe and the city of Grandview this year, correct, Alan?
Correct.
So, there's a whole lot more cities in the Greater Kansas City metro than just the three of us. We are honored to be recognized this year. The next item on the agenda, I am off my game because of the veterans appreciation earlier, sorting through my papers, is a presentation regarding Gardner Golf Course. Matt McClure is going to lead off. Good evening, Matt.
Good evening, Council. I'm not necessarily here to do a formal presentation on the golf course, so to speak. I'm more here to kind of keep the golf course conversation on the front burner, just kind of maybe hope to spark some discussion and dialogue that'll kind of help us move closer to what we want the future of the golf course to look like this evening. So, as, you know, as you're more than aware, the current lease on the course expires on August 16th of 2018. And right now, we're about nine months away from that, that particular date. So, to kind of give a short timeline and maybe to catch some people up who may not be aware, going back to 2015 of August, a golf course study, funds for golf course study were approved in 2015 for the, for 2016. After that, public input was collected at a town hall meeting held at the senior building in February of 2016, followed up by a golf course survey. J.J. Keegan was in town in July to present a work session of information he collected regarding the Gardner Golf Course. And more recently, an MOU had been developed, an interest from Great Life had surfaced with an interest in potentially running the golf course. Over the past few weeks, the Pruitt's have also expressed an interest in continuing to run the course as well. So, some, some different, different options there. Also, over the past few weeks, the Pruitt's have expressed some concerns over their financial situation right now in regards to the golf course. You know, they've offered a couple different options to Council, and I think those have been shared with you. All this said, you know, the hope is tonight we can kind of foster some dialogue, dialogue tonight that maybe can kind of get us rolling towards a general direction of what we want to do with the golf course. You know, staff would be more than happy to afford Council the opportunity to adjourn into executive session to maybe discuss if they so desire. But, you know, like I said, time is kind of the essence here on the golf course, and I think you guys are all aware of that, you know that. But, you know, if we can maybe have some discussion this evening if you guys desire and maybe kind of see what we like to do, I know we have some folks in the house who may have some interest in what you guys have to think about it and what you have to say. So, that said, I'll kick it back to you guys.
Thank you, Matt. Now, we've got members from Great Life here? Yes? Okay, I think we've got four of them. Mr. Pruitt's here? Both Mr. Pruitt's are here. Good evening, gentlemen. So, Lee, you still there?
I am still here.
Okay, gotta check in, make sure we still have quorum. So, is there anybody that would like to...
Have we got any specifics? I guess I will, if you don't mind.
Well, I want to say back on the 17th or 18th, I know we received an MOU, Todd Senate, from the Great Life folks. And...
That's the most current one, then, that's it.
In addition, we've received a letter from the Pruitt's, I want to say yesterday or today, maybe, Friday? Okay, yeah. Not getting my emails on my phone right now, so I didn't see it until this morning. So, is there anybody that would like to lead off by hearing from one of the groups represented here?
I'd like to, from the Great Life folks, if they could kind of summarize their thoughts on the course and what their MOU is for the folks that don't have it in front of them. If that's possible.
Oh, I'm sure it's possible. If I could get you to state your name and address for the record.
My name is Stephanie Swinson, I live at 16382 Leavenworth Road in Basor, Kansas. I am the general manager of the Burning Tree Golf Course that resides in DeSoto, Kansas. It is a Great Life location. As you probably, or first, I want to say thank you for giving us the time to give you some information about us and our business and how we operate. As you probably know, our company, Great Life, has provided you, the city, with an MOU, and it is our way of showing interest in operating and managing the golf course, or the Gardner Golf Course. We would like to begin making negotiations for the opportunity to take some current, existing lease and to come to an agreement on a long-term lease and to become the operating and management company of the Gardner Golf Course. Great Life is a company that can provide your community with a golf course that will be proud to be called Gardner. Our expertise in golf course management has proven to all golfers in our area as the best. Any and all of you are welcome to visit our locations in DeSoto, known as Burning Tree, and Ottawa is our other course, and it's known as the Ottawa Country Club. DeSoto has been rated as some of the best greens in all of Kansas City, and you can visit with any and all of our patrons to that. Many of your Gardner folks have came out and voiced that as well. We just know how to grow grass. To give you some background on our current and past status of who we are and what our passion is in the golf industry, our mission is to promote a happy lifestyle for individuals and families by offering golf and fitness at the affordable rate in a relaxed and friendly atmosphere. We strive for the best customer service to any and all on and off the golf cars, course. We participate in the DeSoto community to support and maintain a high level of commitment to our community. We support the following organizations. In DeSoto Chamber of Commerce, we're Business of the Year. We've been the ambassador awards for two years in a row. I'm currently the chamber president and have been for the past two years in DeSoto. I'm also a board member for the Economic Development Council in DeSoto, and I have held that position for two years. We are an accredited business of the Better Business Bureau of Kansas City, and we support our local schools, athletic departments is one and one of our solid commitments. Our golf courses not only bring the local community golfers and fitness enthusiasts, but we bring golfers from all over a wide geographical area. So when golfers find a course that provides great benefits, they will drive a long ways to play the game. Understand that comment, at Burning Tree, we currently provide memberships to 350 families who frequent our course and our fitness center. However, many of the families do not live inside the DeSoto proper. Approximately 40% of our golfing members are DeSoto residents. Therefore, the members, memberships are supported primarily by golfers from other communities with a total of over 5,000 rounds of golf, that's just the members. This doesn't include the totals of public play for over the Kansas City area. We've been supported in the last 11 months by 10,000 rounds of golf by public play only, and with my basic math skills, we've totaled over 15,000 rounds at Burning Tree in the last 11 months. Golfers talk about great golf locations, and Gardner Golf Course has been one of the favorite locations for all golf advocates for many years. I hear it daily. The layout of your course is loved by many. We believe that Great Life can be, can bring new life to your vital asset of your community, and promoting great golf for a great price will help your community with progressive tax revenue and open opportunities for all ages. Not only from the golf course, but it brings golfers to eat and dine and spend their money on, at gas stations and et cetera. Our two, our two current locations, we provide great golf for all ages. We bring the opportunity of young golfers, too. In DeSoto, we built a golf academy with the assistance of Optimist International, which we opened in 2015 and hit a sword with record numbers for the youth from all over the Kansas City area. I had some this year that came from Raytown to participate. I have two girls that actually went to the PGA Nationals in Orlando, Florida, that were a part of it, and they come from Parkville. The first year we were open instructional golf for 40, we had over 40 young golfers, and we were, we were named the number one golf academy by Optimist International nationally, and we were honored by the governor with a star of excellence. This year, our academy housed over 54 young golfers from ages five to 14, with two pros and four coaches from our schools. Great Life is asking for the city of Gardner to consider a partnership and begin moving forward with negotiations, because our commitment is solid, and we truly believe that Great Life is the right choice to revitalize your asset for the community of Gardner. Gardner residents will stand, stand proud to say, that is our golf course, the Gardner Golf Course.
Thank you.
And what, is there something that I need to...
Well, we'll see, does, do you all want to ask questions now, or do we want to afford some time to the Pruitt's, or...
I have, I, I have other persons that, if you want to...
Are prepared to speak or answer questions?
Oh, certainly.
I, I mean, I, a few questions to start with, anyway. You mentioned fitness center, is that something you're looking at including in this facility?
Not at that location, no. If we have an opportunity to open a fitness center, that is a probability. We've reached out with a couple of other locations in the community, and we're speaking with them, but there's not anything that's solid. But our main goal is to, our main focus is the golf course at this, at this time.
So, looking at this real quick, it says, RS, the, you'd asked the city of Gardner to estimate a cost of $290,000 for some repairs, is that, is that what this list on the second page is, or is this $290,000 plus the additional list, or are you familiar with this one?
I wrote that, sorry.
Oh, well, yeah, you're pretty familiar, then, right? So, is that, is that, I'm sorry, then, does that $290,000, is that...
The way it's broke down is that we're asking for a partnership with the city of Gardner.
Yeah.
The $210,000, that is, is our commitment, I believe. I don't have the paper in front of me, I didn't bring it in tonight, but I'll just go off the top of what I remember writing. The $210,000 is what we will contribute for our commitment to the, to the golf course.
Right.
Okay? The $290,000, thank you. Great Life is asking the city of Gardner to incur shared rehabilitation costs for the following items, the turf and the seed, and for seeding and replanting the Gardner Golf Course. For greens, tee boxes, fairways, and seeding. That's for every blade of grass that's out there that needs to become grass.
Okay.
Okay? Rebuild, pardon me?
Nine holes, correct.
That's, that's what, we, we want to be in negotiation, understanding we are asking to start with nine holes. Dollar value-wise, that's what we think we can get started. If there is something that comes in behind it that you all want to add to it in, as a second phase or third phase, we're open for that, but we need to start somewhere and get started.
Right.
Okay? Rebuilding the bunkers, and then, that's, that, that is just the value of what those items is gonna cost, and our part of it is the other $210,000.
I guess my question is, there's that $290,000 here on the second page, there's another list of items, so is this in addition to the $290,000, I guess, is that? Or is this part of the $290,000?
No, that is what it's gonna take to put those, put all of that grass into place. That is just upfront what it's gonna cost for that. The rest of this is stuff that is still there.
Still there, okay.
That we're asking, that we don't want to be a part of it, it's stuff that needs to be fixed, or the White House needs to be renewed.
So that's above and beyond the $290,000?
I don't have any idea, anything about those costs, due to the fact I didn't, wasn't privy to any of that information, so I only went with what I knew the cost would be.
So, and then the other thing is, in that $290,000, are we talking to lump sum, or do we do payments? How do you guys work that out?
We're in negotiations, we just got to figure out how we're gonna do this.
Okay.
That, we're asking for your guidance, that's what we're here for. I mean, I'm not trying to be rude, I'm just, I'm being honest.
I had nerves sometimes, making sure that I know, so...
So between the both of us, that we would be, we would pay $210, you'd be paying $290? It's negotiable, we can figure out what we can do, we got to just talk, we got to come, we got to get together somehow.
Right.
I have a question.
Go ahead, Lee.
What, does anybody know how much we're spending to rehabilitate the irrigation system?
I believe that from Mr. Keegan's, do you want me to speak, or do you all want to speak?
Yeah, if you...
I believe Mr. Keegan's estimate in the feasibility study, the irrigation feasibility study, it said something like a 1.5 million for the entire 18 holes. And from, and visiting with Scott, in what we had talked with Mr. Keegan, we'd be, half of that would be $750,000, if not less. And that's starting from, as I put in this MOU, that we would start from a transfer pump station at the Gardner Lake and the whole thing, because it's just not, it's not capable of handling the volume that it needs to keep the grass healthy.
Right. So we're really talking about, we're not talking about a $290,000 investment, we are talking about a $1 million plus investment by the city department, right?
The way, the way I've, the way my numbers came out in visiting with my Great Life folk and also, or the owners of Great Life, and also with Scott, it came to like 1.1 mil total for the irrigation system and for the renovation of the course.
And that's the city's portion, or, or... Yeah, that's all.
That's the city.
That's the city's portion.
Right.
Plus whatever removal costs we have for the stuff on the second page here. It's like the, getting rid of the old building and fixing the bridges and all that, so... Yeah, the cart shed. Right.
And again, we don't have, have any idea...
Right, that's all, that's us. So with a, so with a clubhouse, have we decided to replace the clubhouse? Yeah, something's got to be done with that.
Well, I was just saying, also, maintenance, we'd need to build a maintenance shed or something.
From what? From what?
Stephanie, go ahead.
Just a minute, please. This is Mike, Mike Mallory, the owner of Great Life.
You my address, or no?
Stephanie gave an address, we'll go with that.
As far as a maintenance shed, I believe that when I toured the place, the white building was acceptable, obviously it's not, would be the greatest option in the world, but it is acceptable for now, if it meets, if it's going to meet up to your code, is I guess, is I guess is where we're going to have to, uh-
Right.
I've been in the golf business twenty-eight years, Hal, I've seen far worse shops than that, I've seen far better, obviously, but if it, if it's up to code, we can make it work. Then we'd have to just kind of, we'll have to probably build something, a lean shed or something, just to keep our, to keep our, the equipment that we're going to have to buy inside or out of, out of the weather.
Somebody said something about the clubhouse.
Yeah. I, I asked, I actually asked about the clubhouse, because as of right now, that clubhouse is not included within the existing lease, if they, if that-
That is correct, and that's, that's one of the negotiations with the Pruitt's is, I mean, they personally own the clubhouse that is sitting there. For Great Life, for us, it is acceptable clubhouse to work our pro shop out of. I mean, we, we're not big on frills, and, I mean, we're in, just giving a good golf course, a nice golf course, a friendly place to come, but that's the negotiation that'll have to be worked out with the Pruitt's, is buying it out from them, having them remove it, and then we would have to have a, you know, obviously, buying them out would be the cheaper option than putting a new building there.
Sure. And have you, have you thought about down the road, I know the lease agreement is just basically going, which is, or the memorandum of understanding would be just for the golf course upkeep and, and maintenance and, you know, greens fees and those kind of things, but have you thought about, or have we talked about perhaps doing some net positive revenue enhancements, you know, on the property, such as a driving range, or is there even a space for a driving range?
There's a drive, there's an existing driving range there now, and it will, we will keep it operational, try to make it some improvements too, it's some target, you know, some target greens.
Sure.
Some target, uh, some, maybe some Bermuda to, uh, grass to hit off of, and some mats in the, in the wintertime, but, uh, yeah, our, our base motto is to, is to make this a, a very, very, very nice nine-hole course. Zoysia green, or Zoysia tee boxes, Zoysia fairways, bringing in sod to make the greens, very, very nice, I mean, we would love for the city to come out at any point and, and view the golf course, and we would have no problem with that, because, uh, I got a quote that says, "I like making money, but I like, I hate having bad greens worse." I mean, I, I really, you could tell my guy, I tell my guys, greens are first, greens are second, greens are third, greens are, and then move on from there.
Yeah, greens, greens are critical.
Yeah, that's where your, that's where your bread and butter is.
Yeah. Now, you, you've mentioned, real quick here, you've mentioned the nine-hole course, is that what, I mean, this is, are you planning on having an eighteen-hole course, or?
Our, our view, our, our vision right now is, I'm part owner with Great Life on Ottawa Country Club and Burning Tree Golf, both, both nine-hole courses, and we see there's a little niche in the nine-hole, in a nine-hole market. People don't have time all the time to go play eighteen holes, and if they do, we found out they don't mind playing the nine-hole twice. Obviously, it costs half as much or more to maintain eighteen holes, and fiscally, that's just where, now, if this thing, two or three years down the line blows up, and, and we see a huge need for, to add eighteen holes, we may come approach the city and, you know, say, hey, what, what can we do to bring this other eighteen back to life? And, and make it fiscal, you know, make it fiscal, you know, fiscally fair for both parties.
Okay, so what would you do with regard to the nine? Would you create second, a second set of tee boxes?
That's correct, that's correct.
The back nine?
That's correct. Most of the time, we try to, most time, we try to add length and add a, add a angle difference, you know, it kind of makes it play a little bit different, forty yards and, you know, teeing off from the left or the right, kind of, you know, makes the whole play a little bit different.
I can't handle myself.
Okay.
I'm Rick Farron, I'm one of the principals in Great Life also. The other nine, we're really big into junior and youth golf, as you just heard. We see that secondary nine as being a par-three beginner level, maybe some foot golf, frisbee golf, we, we have several amenities and family enhanced activities that we could put to that nine, and then like Mike said, if it ever becomes available, that it makes more sense to have it be a regulation eighteen, we'd be happy to do it.
And you spoke on the youth academy, which I think would be a great thing for the community.
Yeah, I think in, in that MOU, we, we foresee a three or hole, three or four hole, ages five through twelve only, free, free, we would provide clubs, we would provide balls, you know, with a little bit of help from the city just to maintain those four holes.
A lot of what we're about is growing the game, and somebody asked about the fitness, we use that as a marketing tool, just to get people to try golf, but we'll do family clinics, we'll do junior clinics, you know, to us, a great day is getting the family out on the golf course, you know, together with all the different activities where they can enjoy themselves, so.
Well, and I, I heard you talking some about partnerships, like with the, I guess, the Optimist Club in, in DeSoto, is that, is that the group you usually work with in other municipalities, or, or does it just depend on who's, who's willing to step up and, and play a part?
Well, what we noticed is, the Optimist Club, where it came from, is they ran the junior golf program at Ottawa, and, and the Ottawa location was open a year or two before the DeSoto location, so we went to Stephanie, and she wanted to, she wanted to start a junior golf program. Little did we know, there was no Optimist Club in the city of DeSoto, so what do they do? They go and start one. She, she's president, my brother's vice president, and that's how the, they actually, they actually started an Optimist Club in DeSoto, just so we, uh, to help support the junior golf program. She said we had fifty or sixty in the junior golf program, we turned, we turned down ten or fifteen, because we couldn't, we couldn't support it. I mean, it's, it's been very, very, very successful and a neat, and a neat deal.
Well, the local state governor for Optimist has talked to me, I'm still looking for somebody that wants to spearhead starting an Optimist Club here.
I might have your gal.
Actually, with all these interested golfers around, I'm sure we could find one person.
You would think.
About the equipment, do you guys provide the equipment, the mowers, the?
Yes, yes, we provide the golf carts, golf, all the mowers, sprayers, all, all of that. And that's the city one?
So, I have another question, whenever I can get in.
Sure, Lee, go ahead.
Uh, so how, how much more of the golf course continue to cost after we make the one point one million dollar investment?
Zero. That's all, that's all I'm asking for. And with that, I-
After that, it's on us.
With, after that, it's on us. And a little background on DeSoto, it was closed down for two years before we got there, when, when we showed up and had an agreement with the city of O'Leary, so they owned, they owned the property. The grass was ten foot tall, trees had fallen over from some ice storms, greens obviously were dead, irrigation system was in shambles, we've removed about three hundred trees, uh, you know, and it's, I think some of your people, Scott obviously came over two or three times, and everybody that comes there is very impressed with what we've done in five years, it was a, it was a long process, because we did it all on our own, it was, it was a struggle, but, uh, the conditions, the easy part, I mean, improving the golf carts, courses, the easy part.
What was the investment that DeSoto made in their golf course?
Zero.
I see you learned your lesson, unfortunately.
That's not necessarily, uh, we have a, a fitness center in their city hall that we have a very favorable lease with, and that was the term that we gave them, is that we would only come into that town if we could have a fitness location.
Well, with, with, with a, this is one of the reasons why I was asking for, you know, revenue added possible incentives on the, you know, on the course property itself. You know, I've always kind of maintained that, you know, up next to greens and fairways and tee boxes, your clubhouse is typically your biggest money, you know, your biggest money driver, because you could put banquets there, you could put different events and for, I mean, you, you're looking for a place that has a lot, a very, very high premium on, on event space, it's Gardner. We have very few places that can, that can support the kind of events, larger events, that, that a lot of places would be looking for. And, you know, that's, that's one of those things I was thinking of, and also the fact that we could put a, potentially put a fitness type of facility in a clubhouse such as that.
Yeah, we're, we're all about the win-win, so, I, I think it's important, and, and I think that's what we really bring to the table, we've done sixty-five of these now, so, and, and they're all different, but, you know, when, when you folks figure out exactly what it is you want and what that vision is, which may be a conference center slash fitness thing, we have those, I, I agree, I think that'd be a great idea, but we, we are able to work that into what we do and then make that function and hopefully operate it at a profit.
Well, that's the whole point of thinking, that the more that we can, that we can squeeze out of the revenue stream of, of, of a facility such as this, the, the easier it would be then to make it profitable for you as well as for the city, so we can recoup our investment.
It's very true.
I'm a big fan of ROI, and if we're putting one point one million dollars into a, a facility, we'd like to be able to recoup some of that investment back.
Absolutely.
And, and so, and not just in property tax revenue, but also in just the whole, the whole, you know, ecosystem around that golf course offering. We don't, you know, I, I'm, I, I understand the subsidy sometimes is a, is, is required, but for golf and, and the kind of offering you're looking for, and it sounds like you want to put in there, I think we could definitely look at something that's at least revenue neutral and possibly, possibly revenue positive.
Yeah, I don't think we have any facilities that are subsidized that we operate at this point.
Yeah, great.
So, I have another question, if I may.
Yes, go ahead, Lee.
What, um, the one point one million dollars aside, what do you think it will take to make a minimally viable golf course at this point, at this point? Do you think that, that number is one point one million, or do you, do you think there's some number south of that, that we, that we can, we can jump into a little more comfortably?
The biggest issue is, and it's the biggest cost, is irrigation system. I mean, and that's, we're, we're just using seven fifty as a, as a guideline from the, from get, uh, Mr. Keegan's study. I, I know there was a, at one point, a request to get a true feasibility study on what it would actually cost, and I don't know if that's been done yet or not.
No, it is nothing.
Okay. You know, but that's probably, that's probably in the ballpark, with a new, you know, with new pump system and, you know, and, and irrigation, irrigation heads and, and all your controllers, and it's probably, you're probably not too far off that. You know, the, the Zoysia fairways, that's stripping them in, that's not solid sod in them, and that, that saves about two hundred thousand on, you know, so we're, we're doing it probably the cheapest way we can do it. You know, with, I mean, we're going to have to re-sod a lot of the greens, which is, first of all, bent grass sod is expensive, second of all, it's highly labor intensive.
Yeah, and we certainly need a certain expectation level, or, you know, we might not necessarily have an interest.
What kind of a, I didn't see a length of terms that you're asking for.
There, there's been no negotiations or talks, talks on it.
Probably a lot of that would depend on what that initial upfront cost for us ends up being too, just same song, cause I, for us, we got to make sure we can cover our, our ROI, and we're good.
I, I thought I'd saw something that said five to twelve years.
That's a big range, though.
Yeah, well, yeah, but that's, I mean, is five enough, is, you know?
Depends on that win-win and what you're asking for, I mean, we're, we're certainly capable of doing more, but then that obviously translates into a longer deal.
And it's obviously going to take, it's not going to be perfect overnight, I mean, it's going to, it's going to take a little while, and then it's going to take a little bit to get customers knowing that, you know, that the improvements are being made and, and get some of this, but the Gardner Golf Course brand is, is a good brand, in DeSoto, I fought, people not knowing that golf course was there. I mean, and people that knew it was there didn't know it was back open, I fought that a lot. People understand Gardner Golf Course and the, and the, affordable golf is, I mean, there's just a big need for affordable golf in this area. You got, Curry Highlands is one of our, one of our courses, Sycamore Ridge, Falcon Ridge is, you know, kind of the closer courses, you know, and they're kind of affordable, but, I mean-
Not affordable, like commuting.
Exactly, exactly, but, you know, it's-
Depends on who you talk to. So, so, other than the one point one that we're talking about here, and that's, again, that's a ballpark figure, we don't have it nailed down, is there anything else in terms of incentives, or any kind of things like that, that you would, that you would be looking for, unless we decided to work with you on something like a, like a, you know, conference center slash clubhouse and fitness offering?
I, I would say no, and the only other cost to the city, like I said, is going to be, it sounds like you guys are pretty hardcore, wanting to tear that old white house down.
Yeah.
One of the, one of the cart sheds maybe wanting, I, I don't know that, but that's right over by ten tee box, I, you know, I, I don't exactly know what, if that one has to come down for safety or for code.
I think it's been, it's been condemned, hasn't it? We haven't condemned it yet, but it would be, it's definitely out of, out of-
And then, and I don't exact, I don't exactly know what the city of Gardner would like to do with the, uh, power lines that are going through the course, if that's going to be-
Yeah, that's a problem.
-an acceptable to bury.
I'm trying to remember, is that KC PNL, or is that Gardner Energy?
The, the power lines that cross the fairways are private power lines to feed the oil well pumps. So, you're going to have to work with the property owner of the oil rigs to have them removed or replaced. They are, have been inspected, and there are some safety issues that we would like to have addressed, which may help remove some of those.
That would be a good idea. I know that we don't, as a city, own subsurface rights, does that give us a problem with regard to burying those lines? No, because if we'd be burying it, we're burying it for the- We'd be burying it for the guy who owns the wells. Right, who owns the property rights underground.
Yeah, I mean, if, if you're talking about, let's say, you replace an overhead with an underground, that is actually preferable and the most safe way to do it now, because what you're dealing with is the old, if you, if you ever remember tube and knob, where you had a two-wire system, basically you have a, a neutral and a hot, and there's no ground at all.
Yeah.
So, those things are hot all the time when they're hot, and underground, the new, the new requirement would, would have all of the new code requirements, and it would be, have a, a three-wire safety on it, so it would be, even though it's a, a high voltage unit, it would be much safer than what's currently there.
As someone who's hit a ball with those power lines before, I would rather they not be hot, if something were to happen. I don't know about you, Chris.
It's like, you got a good eye if you hit those power lines.
No, I don't, that's-
And then also, on, on some of the bridges that were unsafe, when we're moving it to nine holes, and if we just keep the existing front nine, I think there's only one, maybe two that come into place. A couple of the worst ones were back on the backside, I believe. So, I mean, if, if we do away with the back nine, those could probably just be taken out until, for, till future, I guess.
What, what happens with the back nine? I mean, is that just under our control at that point, for, for maintenance and going?
Yeah, what, what we proposed was a three-hole practice course, and then maybe three holes of foot golf, maybe frisbee golf, almost three, three, and three, but-
But it wouldn't take up much of the thirty-
Very, very low maintenance.
I believe the back nine is thirty-five acres, so we wouldn't be taking much of that, we wouldn't be utilizing much of that.
Quick question, and this is from my skill level question, do y'all do any mini golf stuff at any of the other courses?
We do have some.
That's my skill set, and I'm just, for personal reasons, but I figured that might be a good way to get the kids involved too.
Yeah.
Have you guys ever done anything with that?
Good example of another win-win, yeah, I don't know if you have one here down.
We don't, that's why I was thinking.
One of our facilities in Topeka has batting cages, putt-putt, driving range, two of them, driving range.
Maple Creek, you can't say we have golf.
Yeah.
Yeah, you bet.
I'm, I'm curious about something.
Yes?
Um, if, uh, if we, if we enter into this agreement with, with Great Life, will larger citizens have access to other Great Life facilities under a single membership?
Yes. Yeah, it, if you're a member at any level with us, you always get everything on that level, depending on what the final price would be, and you have access to all the other courses, so, and I think the highest fee we, each thirty dollars with a cart to play some of the really nice clubs that we have, so it's a great benefit, and we get a lot of that, we're just, I and several people have been down to Osage National, and it's just part of what we do.
How many would be on this level, approximately?
What's that?
I believe, I believe the level that Gardner would be on, I believe there's-
Probably twenty.
Twenty-some golf courses that would be, go there, walk for free.
Great.
And then, once again, we would expect that some of our members would come here and play and take advantage of that all.
Oh, yeah, true.
Yeah.
Helps bring some folks in, tourism.
Yep.
Absolutely, absolutely, which, what you got back to, like sixty percent of our golf is from outside of city, city of DeSoto.
Laura, put you on the spot, financing, how does this work with, I mean, what, what are we looking at?
There's no way to answer that question yet. I mean, you, you can, it's always, A, a government policy, governing body policy decision and your prioritization. And can I find debt service for a million? Yes. But that's your priority and your policy decision, not mine, because this is where we're at right now, just talking at a podium, and then there would be discussions with bond counsel about what kind of financing and how these things are done. So, can I find you the money? Yes. Do you make the decision? Yes.
Laura, Laura's very good at finding, finding dollars.
Maybe I do want to work for her.
Don't get any ideas.
What I do like, I mean, you know, it is an investment, but it's also still our asset. I mean, ultimately.
Well, I like the potential of a diversified offering. I mean, if we can appeal to more than just, you know, 3% to 5% of the community who plays regular golf and can bring in additional options and revenue streams, especially with like a nice clubhouse, which would be able to do some events. And that's the other thing, too. We have, we have a real shortage of event space. Even with the conference center going in with Hampton, if we can do some of that stuff at the golf club and be able to do the big banquets.
You're probably familiar with Deer Creek in the middle of Kansas City.
Yes.
We do more business there in event space than we do in golf.
Yeah. And that helps to alleviate your cost of being able to keep up the course and actually be able to put that back into improvements.
Yep.
You know, and so I think it's a win-win for everybody.
Now, I would imagine that event space would be after we've established traffic.
Mm-hmm.
But certainly something that's in need, although we do have a conference center coming online.
Yes, we do.
It's, you know, it's probably still not enough for the needs of a community of 22,000.
Yep.
One other question. What, what kind of staffing do you typically do at a course this size?
Typically, clubhouse, four to five people.
Five, between five and six.
Probably 12 to 15, inside and out. And if we got, if we did end up with a fitness center, two to three more.
It goes up.
It goes up.
Sure.
Just with cleaning and, and sell memberships and stuff like that.
Sure.
Anyone else have any further questions or comments?
Anything else, Lee?
Great life people. Lee, anything?
I guess the only other thing I would have is, my question for Laura is not whether or not we can find the debt service for 1.1 million dollars. It is more that what would we have to give up in order to pay the debt service on 1.1 million?
That's our decision, Lee. We have to prioritize.
I want a, I want a list of things that we would have to give up.
Yeah, that's, that's, being a policy decision, that's our decision.
We've done that before. We had to do that just, just not too long ago with the budget, so we'd have to figure out.
Exactly. During that budget discussion, we were given a list of positions to eliminate additional heads for. And in this case, I'm just kinda wondering if there's a way to, to help us prioritize and see where this would fit.
Well, that's, we've got time for...
Not a lot, though.
Not, not, not a lot, but yeah, we've, we would have to, we would have to, yeah, we'd have to start getting busy on getting this done.
Really appreciate the time. Let's look forward to...
Thank you.
Any questions?
Win-win, is it?
I have one last question, really quick. If we were to go through an MOU process, how many months do you think it would take to potentially, you know, put in the renovations that are gonna be required to reopen the course and have it ready to play? And would we be able to get this done by the end of the spring?
We would be open while we were doing the...
You'd be able to phase it out, take three holes?
We could hit about any time plane. That would really depend on you guys' side.
Okay.
Fall would have been obviously the best for growing grass, but with, the greens is the main thing. I mean, if you sod it, it's not as big a deal doing it in fall, spring, winter. We're actually, we're actually sodding some bent grass next, next week.
We have our own construction division. We're actually doing the work over at the Jayhawk Club. It's going on right there now. So, we're pretty mobile and ready, ready to act when we get the green light, so.
Yeah, we have a project going on down at Heritage Park Golf Course in South Johnson County, a new practice putting green facility. I mean, it's a pretty nice deal.
Hey, we gave you a list of the projects we're doing right now, if you want to see them.
Yeah, we started, we started our own golf course construction company.
That's, that's great to know because when everything's kind of in one place, it's a lot easier to make it happen.
For us, too.
Yeah.
Thank you, Joe.
Thanks.
Now, I know we have some correspondence from the Pruitt's. Jim, Kurt, would you guys like to say something or anyone that you have here with you?
I got somebody speaking, and she's got all the notes and everything.
Well, can we start with the name and address, just for the regular?
Name and address?
I'll let you go, Kurt.
I'm Jim Pruitt, Gardner Golf Course. And I've been here for 29 years, and that's about it. Baggy is...
Yeah, and Jim, could you address?
1452 East Meadow Lane, Oatha.
Okay, great, thanks.
Okay, and I am actually joining Jim to kind of talk about this topic a little bit. So...
What's your name?
Maggie Scaletti.
Okay, great.
Right?
Thanks, Maggie.
And it's a pleasure to be here. As you guys all know, the Pruitt's have been with the City of Gardner under contract for almost 30 years. During that time, you know, they've, they've had many great years and many not-so-great years. However, in the ending of their 30-year contract term, the Pruitt's have had many conversations with the counterparts here from Great Life in the past. As you guys had mentioned, there was a 2015 feasibility study in which Great Life kind of came into the picture and, you know, after that, kind of started expressing, you know, interest, and, you know, things have kind of progressed since then. So, Mr. Pruitt's goal here is essentially to enter in an agreement that provides most value to the City of Gardner and its residents and the communities surrounding, and increase revenues, you know, for the community of Gardner through, you know, an agreement with someone taking over the golf course that's beneficial to everyone, right? So, as was mentioned, time is of the essence. There's about nine months left on the contract. So, there are a couple of key points that, you know, we wanted to bring up just, you know, for note. We had spoken about the rehabilitation of the irrigation system, correct? So, the counterparts from Great Life talked about that being about 750,000 to essentially rehabilitate that irrigation system. Per Section 8 of the contract that, you know, the city has with Mr. Pruitt, if there is an offer, essentially, city has first right of refusal, and the, the city cannot withhold on the basis of anything other than, as I'm gonna pull it up real quick, "Owners shall not withhold said written consent except for reasons pertaining to the qualifications of the financial integrity of the prospective operator." They've been having conversations for quite a while, and with regards to what my understanding is, and obviously what Jim feels, is that the conversations have kind of come to a standstill, as the city has been relatively non-responsive to Great Life taking over Mr. Pruitt's contract. With regards to that, you know, this, this creates obviously great concern. Additionally, I would feel like the, the contract with Mr. Pruitt, you know, would be essentially, you know, it's looking for a win-win. He's, he's been running this thing for 29 years. And Mr. Shutey, is that how it's pronounced?
Mr. Shutey, yes.
Okay, yeah. So, one of the things that you had mentioned was that a subsidy is oftentimes or sometimes, you know, required in a situation like this. Over the course of the timeframe for the golf course, no subsidies have been offered to Mr. Pruitt for the operation of this golf course. Even when, you know, kind of handshake negotiations have gone underway, he's never received a subsidy for it. And having these conversations, we, he's been discussing with Great Life for quite a while, and they've been kind of trying to push some sort of a deal through. He's been trying to pick up someone to take over his lease. Like I said, his goal is to have a smooth transition out of the golf course and someone else come in and take over. Now, given that time is of the essence, you know, is we've got about nine months left, I feel like it's important, and it's actually pertinent, to talk about what sorts of things are in this contract that pertain to the taking over of the golf course. So, when we talk about the rehabilitation of the irrigation system, I think it's also important to note that in Section 4 of Mr. Pruitt's contract, it states that "The operator agrees to erect and maintain all watering facilities and accessories thereto, including pumps, pump house, and incidentals to the said watering system upon the above described premises. Said facilities shall become property of the owner." Therefore, meaning that rehabilitation of the irrigation system is not the only concern. It's actually the fact that he owns the watering system, according to the contract. And that is one of the, one of the things that we have spoken with the people at Great Life about. I mean, he owns all the pumps, he owns all those things. I mean, you could make an argument otherwise, but, I mean, that's something that would be pursued.
Can we ask, we've got legal counsel here, obviously.
Sure.
City attorneys here at all the council meetings. Brian, you wanna weigh in on that?
Yeah, I, you know. Here.
There you go, there we go.
Yeah, I, you know, we've, we've talked about this a couple times, and, you know, as, in light of the kind of posture that the operator is, is taking relative to this, I guess I'd prefer that my legal advice be offered in executive session so that you all can be informed of, of my opinion.
Okay.
Yeah, true.
All right.
Sure. So, the biggest question here is with regards to the facilities owned, the equipment owned, the improvements to, in Section 4 of that clause would be essentially the question of, okay, he's been around for 29 years. He's been a citizen of Gardner. He's put his entire life into this, right? We feel like we've had opportunities to transfer the lease, and those opportunities have been largely unresponsive for the most part. You know, I'm, I'm not insinuating that there's anything going on, but I mean, it does kind of look like it's been a situation waiting out the contract.
Can I ask a question?
Yeah, sure.
Did we have something on file that you sent to the city to say we wanted to remove the contract? Just, I've not seen it, I just asked.
Yeah, it's been informal conversations that when trying to engage, they have not been responded to in an expedient manner, to say the very least.
So, governing bodies at any time been contacted about?
Well, so, you guys actually made note that, you know, after 2015, that feasibility study, there had been interest from other parties. So, I mean, it's, it's pretty well-known.
But, correct me if I'm wrong, we'd have to have a contract.
Nothing formal, nothing formal. And this contract extends another nine months.
I'm just, I'm just trying to make sure that I know, because I've only been here for two years.
Sure.
That there wasn't anything before that was actually, here's what we would like to see happen.
Yeah. Well, and Jim can submit something formal. I think that you guys received a letter essentially stating...
That's the most, that's the most I've seen today.
And that's the most you've seen at this point, and that's great.
Yeah, that's the one, that's the only thing I've seen.
So, at this point, you guys have the letter, you know, the formal letter.
Right, today.
So, and that's something to work on, yeah. Dated November 3rd. So, you know, essentially, what it all comes down to is in transitioning from one to the next. We've got pretty much nine months left on the contract. You guys were talking about starting in the spring with regards to purchasing the clubhouse, that sort of thing. I mean, August is when the contract technically expires, right? At that point, something has to be done with everything. Mr. Pruitt is looking just to get out of this, you know, and, and he's looking to get out of it in, you know, the most smoothly transitional way, the transitional way. But the, the clubhouse, the, the golf course, even throughout renovations, whether the city takes it over or whether Great Life takes it over, those things, I mean, the golf course can stay open. It can maintain, you know, a membership rate. And one of the biggest issues that the Pruitt's have had in operating the golf course is that there was a public feasibility study based on this entity, which obviously, you know, was a contract between the, the Pruitt's and the City of Gardner. And once that feasibility study came out, membership started to decline, and it's been a declining rate ever since.
Joining to check, Lee Moore, are you still with us?
Yeah, I'm just, I'm standing by waiting for what the point of this is.
Well, and actually, I'm, we, you received the letter from the Pruitt's?
The point of it is, is that we would like to expedite a decision on the basis of what the city would like to do with the golf course.
Well, and I, I'm beginning to think that what we need to do is
Go to executive session.
Go into executive session.
Yeah.
Sure.
Get some legal advice. I've, I've got, Ryan, how much time do you think you would need?
20 minutes.
20 minutes? Do you all mind?
Lee, I'll call you.
No, not at all.
Okay.
Don't mind it.
I entertain a motion to enter into exec, to recess into executive session.
Now, some of...
Second.
Motion shoots second winners, that we recess into executive session pursuant to KSA 754319B2 to discuss matters related to attorney-client privilege, beginning at 8:03 and returning to regular session at 8:23. All those in favor who came by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstention, we stand in recess. We'll be back in a minute.
Maybe you can call Lee back.
Where, where are you?
Oh, okay. Oh, you don't, okay. Gosh, she stole all my thunder. I was excited about that.
Lee?
Hey. Can you hear us?
I'm back.
Can you hear us?
I can hear you.
Okay, we got a few minutes. Want me to just work on presentations?
Oh, yeah. Yes.
Hopefully, there was still leftover cake. Was there still cake out there? Did you guys have some?
I have.
Do you still have some cake and stuff while you're out there? They put it all away. I like, that would be the per-.
They put it all away.
Oh. Yeah, I thought you guys have like the best, I figured this would be the best executive session ever. You guys go out there, have snack, and then-
Should write that in, okay.
I know.
Hey, Lee, you on?
I am.
All right, great.
Right. No, yeah, well, I got a coin, so it's gonna be hard.
You gotta make sure you're on, because we don't have a form if you're not there.
I checked already.
Yeah, I can see you guys on camera.
Hold on.
Hey, Lee.
Look at that.
I love livestream.
Lee watching the livestream.
I love livestream.
It's pretty awesome. Is it insane, or is it a few minutes, seconds off?
It's, it's off, I'm sure.
It's a little bit off.
Yeah. Just be sure to mute the mic on the livestream so you don't create feedback.
I did. I've been, I've been livestreaming it the whole time.
Awesome.
Oh, yeah. It's exciting. It's best way to watch from.
There's, there's one person watching the livestream.
So, yeah, I saw, I saw Steve shaking his head every time I talk.
You don't see that when you're normally here?
I may, I may have picked up on the mayor rolling his eyes one.
All right.
It's too quiet.
The time was supposed to be?
25. So, we got about two minutes.
It's not usual that we got, didn't have to go back.
I know. Very.
Did you guys hear me say the pledge of allegiance?
No.
Yes.
I wasn't listening, no. I'll be honest with you. I was focused.
All right, I heard Lee, so I know he's there.
Yes.
I am here.
Entertain a motion to resume regular session.
Some of it.
Don't move.
Oh.
Uh, motion more, second melton, that we resume regular session. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Any opposed, any abstention? We are back in regular session. Okay. After consulting, conferring with staff and legal counsel, at this point, we're going to authorize the city attorney to act on the, on behalf of the city and negotiate in good faith with both the Pruitt's and the folks from Great Wa, Great Life. And, and this will be in collaboration with the city administrator and our parks and rec staff as well. And we're going to authorize that to begin as soon as we can get it together with all the parties involved. And, and that's all I can say about that. So, I hope everybody can appreciate it. And with that, is there something that anybody else from the desk has to, to say about it? Then we're going to move on with our agenda.
I guess, thanks for coming out.
For those of you that might be packing up and leaving after this, thank you for coming in, for your attention, and, and, and for your interest in, in Gardner Golf Course.
Thank you.
So, the next item on the agenda is public comments. Members of the public are welcome to use this time to make comments about city matters or items on the agenda that are not part of a public hearing. We don't have a public hearing this evening, so pretty much can talk about anything. I will point out, I am in receipt, and all of the members of the governing body receive this as well, an email from Jeff Pfeifer containing public comments. At Mr. Pfeifer's request, we're going to provide in the minutes a summary of his comments, and that'll be entered in for the official record. Anybody that wishes to do an Open Records Act request for his actual comments, and are, are welcome to do that, but all public comments, whether presented orally or in writing, are generally summarized, as are virtually all items in the meeting minutes. Public comments are never recorded- Public comments are never recorded verbatim, except in extraordinary circumstances. So, we appreciate him for providing this, but it was certainly longer than five minutes. I tried to read it myself. And that's, if, if I could have read it all in the, the time allotted, then I would have done that in the meantime. That is the direction we will go with. So, anyone else care to make public comments? Please step to the podium, state your name and address for the record, and be heard.
My name's Pete Melinda. My address is 644 North Pine Circle. I'd like to tell you that the golf course has been shed, you know, shown in, in a pretty poor light. I've been here for twenty years, golfing many of those years, and I can tell you that that course out there has been in some pretty good conditions over those years. They've had groundskeepers out there that know what they're doing some years. And people bragged about that course out there. Never has that course cost millions of dollars to keep open. That, that golf course has paid the city year after year, a little bit, but that course has been in some pretty darn good conditions, and it hasn't cost that much money. Jeff Stewart stood over at the other meeting, the original golf meeting, and he suggested a course of action for that golf course. He said prioritize it, prioritize all the items that we want to address, and it doesn't have to be done in one year. It doesn't have to be done in two years. There is no urgency here. This course can be fixed a little at a time. And I, I wouldn't want to see taxpayers' dollars shelled out to make that course brand new, and I don't think there's, I think there's a lot of other people that golf out there that would not want to see that either, because they've golfed out there and they know that it can be very playable without spending millions of dollars. Thank you.
Thank you, Pete. Other comments? No one coming forward? Close public comments and move on to the consent agenda. There is one item that, that's on the consent agenda that we're going to pull back and bring back at a... We need to remo-, okay. I'm gonna, I'm gonna ask for a motion to remove consent agenda item number five. We've got some issues that came to light late, that we need to work our way through.
Okay, I'll move, I'll make a motion to remove consent agenda item number five.
Second?
Motion, shoot, second Melton, that we remove consent agenda item number five. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Lee Moore?
Aye.
Okay, good. He's still there.
Put the moves down.
Any opposed, any abstention? Consent agenda item number five has been removed. I would entertain a motion, but is there anyone that would like to remove any of the other four consent agenda items from the agenda? I would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second?
Motion winners, second Melton, that we approve the consent agenda is currently written. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Opposed, any abstention? Consent agenda passes. And Lee Moore is still with us.
I did say aye.
I guess we heard you. So, bete out, we're, we're just trying to check in, make sure we still have a forum. No committee recommendations, no old business items. Our next new business item is consider an ordinance granting the United Telephone Company of South Central Kansas DVA Century Link a contract franchise to construct, operate, maintain, and extend a telecommunications system in the city of Gardner, Kansas, and prescribing the terms of said contract franchise. Ryan Dank, good to see you at the podium.
Thank you, Mr.
Good microphone.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, I am pinch hitting for, for Matt this evening. This is a contract franchise with South Central Kansas, which you know as Century Link, for telecommunications facilities to be operated within the city limits of the city of Gardner. It's, it's a standard telecommunications franchise agreement consistent with, you'll recall, one we did with mobility. And, and so it's, it's along those same terms. We set a three percent franchise fee, which is consistent with what we've done for all other franchise agreements in the city, and I'd be happy to field any questions any of you might have.
Okay. We would open the floor for public comments regarding new business item number one. No one coming forward? Questions for Ryan or other city staff regarding what's going to be ordinance number 2559?
I, I looked over this, and I couldn't see, but I just wanted to make sure. This isn't any kind of an exclusive. I didn't see that.
It actually says, it actually says non-exclusive.
Okay.
Yeah.
I just wanted to make sure.
Yeah, so I'm looking here, it's the local exchange service you're talking about, just basically telephone service, DSL, wired service.
Right.
And I also see here that what they're looking for, is this just a renewal on their existing contract?
It is.
Is that what this is?
Yeah.
And when Century Link is purchased by Level Three, or when that merger is complete, they're gonna have to do this again, correct?
Well, that, they'll have their transferability provisions, and they'll have to comply with those. Yeah.
Okay, alright. That's all I had.
Anyone else? Lee Moore, any questions?
No, I'm good.
I'd entertain a motion on ordinance number 2559.
Some of.
Second?
Motion, shoot, second winners, that we adopt ordinance number 2559, granting to United Telephone Company of South Central Kansas DVA Century Link, a contract franchise to construct, operate, maintain, and extend a telecommunications system in the city of Gardner, Kansas, and prescribing the terms of said contract franchise. City Clerk, you can call roll, please.
Councilman Shute?
Yes.
Councilman Moore?
Yes.
Councilman Winters?
Yes.
Councilman Melton?
Yes.
Okay. Ordinance number 2559 passes. And is it for new business items? Move on to council updates. Does the council have anything for staff? Rich Melton?
A couple of quick things. The, I had a couple citizens contact me about the street paving. I know we probably won't have to have this done again for a while, but on the viaduct, if we like maybe do that at night, when we, next time we get bids or something, because there was buses and everything backed up on both sides of, you know, because that's the only way across, unless you get onto the tracks. So, just something for the twenty-five years from now, when we rip up that street again. Say, hey, just from the past, do it at night. So, and then the second thing, do you have that video, Amy? So, Heath Freeman sent me a video of information about sign thing, and I, I was funny, because he sent it the day before. I was actually out delivering pizza one night, went right by the pool, and, and it is, it was just pitch black out there. I could not see anything as I'm driving by. And then he sends me this video the next day saying, hey, we, you know, we should really look at installing this and right over there for the crosswalk, because you just, I couldn't see anything when I was driving through there. It had lights on. So, I, I thought if we watch this little video here, this thing was something we ought to really have staff look at.
Are you trying to pull it up? I'm sorry.
No, it's alright, for the, that, not only that intersection, but any other one that we might need, because this, it's pretty impressive. It's, it's so impressive, it's hiding.
It's stealthy.
Right.
Real visible, Rich.
Yeah. Hey, it's my fault, right?
Was that somebody going to get in trouble?
Yes.
Do you have dual monitors over there?
Yes.
Okay.
Ah, that might explain it.
Right. Oh, you probably have to switch it over to the other monitor, yeah.
Hello and welcome to Tapco's Traffic Safety Video Series. Today we'll take a look at Tapco's Rectangular Rapid Flash Beacons, or RRFPs. RRFPs are user-actuated amber LED arrays that may be used to supplement warning signs at unsignalized intersections, mid-block, crosswalks, and roundabouts. RRFPs enhance pedestrian and vehicle safety by increasing driver awareness of potential pedestrian conflicts, reducing crashes between vehicles and pedestrians. RRFPs need to be activated by pedestrians, either actively by a push button or passively by a pedestrian detection system, including video detection or infrared ballards.
Can a gentleman speak closer to the microphone?
Hold on, Lee, they're trying to fix this.
None of us are having any luck.
Okay.
I can send you the link later.
...be self-powered and remotely located, eliminating the need to run wiring, thereby saving you time and money. RRFPs use an irregular flash pattern that is similar to the emergency flashers used on police and emergency vehicles, referred to as wigwag or stutter flash pattern. Side-mounted LED arrays flash concurrently to advise pedestrians that the units are flashing. Tapco offers two sizes of RRFPs.
We'll back it up. I think people are gonna be able to hear now.
Today we'll take a look at Tapco's Rectangular Rapid Flash Beacons.
Got it.
Or RRFPs. RRFPs are user-actuated amber LED arrays that may be used to supplement warning signs at unsignalized intersections, mid-block, crosswalks, and roundabouts. RRFPs enhance pedestrian and vehicle safety by increasing driver awareness of potential pedestrian conflicts, reducing crashes between vehicles and pedestrians. RRFPs need to be activated by pedestrians, either actively by a push button or passively by a pedestrian detection system, including video detection or infrared ballards, as shown here, activating blinker sign, LED pedestrian crossing signs. Tapco push buttons and infrared activators can be self-powered and remotely located, eliminating the need to run wiring, thereby saving you time and money. RRFPs use an irregular flash pattern that is similar to the emergency flashers used on police and emergency vehicles, referred to as wigwag or stutter flash pattern. Side-mounted LED arrays flash concurrently to advise pedestrians that the units are flashing. Tapco offers two sizes of RRFPs. The standard size RRFP model has two-inch by five-inch arrays, which meet the FHWA standard. The RRFP XL model with oversized three-inch by seven-inch arrays exceeds the federal standard. The extra-large LED arrays provide greater conspicuity, ideal for multi-lane and higher-speed roadways. Studies showed an eighty-one percent compliance rate of drivers yielding to pedestrians with an RRFP on the right side, and eighty-eight percent compliance with RRFP on both sides. Tapco RRFP systems are typically solar-powered, making them an ideal solution for rapid deployment. Solar-powered systems reduce installation, maintenance, and electric costs to give you huge time and cost savings over grid-based systems, but Tapco can provide RRFP to be wired to your AC power source. Tapco also offers a web-based monitor, alert, and control system called Blinklink, provides you access to and command of your traffic control devices, including real-time notifications to any of your internet-connected devices, both wired and wireless. If you have any questions, or you'd like more information on RRFPs or other solutions, please check out Tapco's website at www.tapconet.com, or contact us toll-free at 800-236-0112. We look forward to helping you take the fast lane to your traffic safety solutions.
So, I guess Heath saw one of these in action in like Overland Park or somewhere and said, hey, this is, you know, so he sent it to me, but I think this, there's several places that I know in town right away that we ought to look at, something like definitely down by Grand Street, where the kids are crossing every day. I mean, that thing is crazy for the greenway.
Crossing.
And there's, there, there's a crossing guard, but it still would be nice to, and then I think over by the pool, and there's probably a handful of other places, but I think it would behoove us to have staff check into these and figure out what it's gonna take.
Chief, can I ask you a question real quick? How is this different from the, the flashing lights that we've got at the one over by the pool right now? Brittany Court.
It's, it's really just a different design. This one here is probably better at getting people's attention, because it's different. It's got that wigwags and, you know, it's more of an emergency signal versus just a notification signal. I, I did look at some other stuff earlier today when I was going over this. They've got, I mean, there's a number of different things that have come on the market just in the last year. There's one that has an LED that it looks like the crosswalk, the paint on the thing is elevated, so it's higher, and you can see it. I mean, there's a number of different technologies that, that people have employed to make them more visible and make crosswalks safer.
And, and we're talking about, this is, it's, it's not just the Tapco people. There's, there's obviously other vendors that are providing similar type services, so that we wouldn't be stuck in a single provider situation.
And they're trying to draw your line aside higher, because it's just hard, I mean, when you're paying attention to what's in front of you to, you know, your attention, to draw your attention off to the side and see people. I mean, it's just, it's difficult for people to, to, you know, see those things off to the side of the road, and that's why the compliance is still about eighteen percent.
Yeah.
So, they're just trying to, to bring the line aside.
I don't, I'm, I don't get a vote on stuff like this, but I'm in favor of it if we, in, in looking into it.
Looking into it.
Yeah.
Yep, yep.
So, that's, that's a, that's a...
That's for you, man.
Well, produced.
That's, Lee, I know you didn't get a chance to see it, but it was cool looking.
I'm watching, yeah. I, I saw the video.
Livestream.
Livestream.
Yeah, seems like a pretty good idea. The one thought that I had though, those, those lights would probably be more effective if they were attached to people's cellphones.
Yeah, that's true. So, Cheryl, you and Chief Burning and Michael Kramer can figure out how best to look into this, and whether or not it's something we can work into the upcoming year's budget or move it into the 2019 budget as part of next year's budget discussions. Yes?
Yes, yes. We, actually, I did talk to Michael Kramer about it, followed up with him, and we got quotes from Tapco for the crossing at Center Street, and it was right at about seventy-three hundred dollars. So, what we have in this year's budget is to do the right-of-way database, followed by the transition pedestrian plan, which is the first step in determining what you would use to look at the different types of technology. And currently, he's working on the RFP to get a consultant to do that.
Well, and, and like Rich said, there's a number of places around town that could use it. I, I mean, I'm right around the corner from the crossing for the greenway.
Yep.
And boy, they could sure use it there.
That's a huge one, and that's, that's high-speed traffic there that's going through there, and a lot of times they're just not paying attention. Oh, you know.
That's pretty cheap insurance, though, to make sure nobody's using it.
Absolutely.
Alright. That's it for me.
Okay. Lee, do you have anything?
Uh, yeah, I've got two things. One, I'm concerned might require a second discussion, it has to do with a couple of legal expenses that I've seen in our bills on the, on the spreadsheet that we got in the agenda packet. I'm concerned about two items in particular. One, this, this, this one, agenda packet and the one, expenditure, expenditure list. It was for Hinkle Law Firm for the amount of fourteen thousand, seven hundred and fifty-nine dollars. And then there was one from... one from the one on September 12th for a company called Incompass Resolution LLC, the amount of $3,168. Now, I'm aware that these two items are very similar in nature in, in, in terms of what they provided us for, in, in return for that dollar amount. What I'm not aware of is why there is such a large discrepancy between the two amounts. So, I'm, I'm concerned about that.
I do think that's something that we'd probably have to have an executive session for. Uh, and, and it would probably be better to schedule that for a time after, uh, you know, so that staff would have a chance to pull this information together.
Okay.
Uh, and, and perhaps you could, uh, send a, an email to, uh, you know, Cheryl or Laura or Laura Ann, Cheryl, and, and, you know, detail it.
Okay. Um, my second issue, uh, second item is, um, I mentioned a while back, I don't, I don't remember when, but it's been probably close to a year, um, but it would be really nice if the expenditure lists were provided in a searchable format, that, uh, instead of a scan of a, of a spreadsheet.
Yes.
So, um, and I think staff had agreed that they would look in on, on how to get that done for us, and I thought it was, a, a change was imminent that would enable us to do that. But these, these spreadsheets are really difficult to look at, um, when they're sideways in a PDF.
Yes. Laura Gorman?
Well, I can't speak to why the PDFs go sideways, because even if you scan them in the right direction, they still print sideways, so I'm, I don't know what happens there. But, uh, um, staff has been, you are not forgotten, the IBM intelligence software we have, um, frankly, I was not pleased with what our first and second try were, because I think it was harder to read than the canned reports that you were getting. So, it's still a work in progress. As far as the spreadsheets, or, I'm sorry, the expenditure listing being created in a searchable format or in an Excel format, it doesn't do that. Um, I could, we have yet to find a way to make it do what you think it's going, what you're asking. So, we're still working on that, you're not forgot it, forgotten, we don't do anything less than A work, and what we got was probably C-minus work for our first and second try. So, to be continued, and I don't have a clue about the rotation of the PDF file you're currently getting.
Okay. That's all I had.
Todd?
Evan, Evan.
Steve?
Yeah, I just have one. Um, I think we all got a, uh, notification from somebody regarding the porta potty at the Gardner Airport, and I know that Michael's not here to, uh, to address the question I had, but I'll, but I'll give it out to staff and basically, you know, what, what are our options for the winter? Because there, I don't think it's, it's, it's a good thing to have the folks at the airport having to, being, have to, have to use a porta potty that's out in the elements. Is there any possibility that we can talk about having some solution to that problem? Winter is coming, and I'm not Jon, Jon Snow, but, you know.
Winter is coming.
Winter is coming, and it's, it's, it's gonna get really cold in that porta potty.
Brett, what do you guys do?
Cheryl?
Okay, thanks, Cheryl.
Cheryl.
I appreciate it.
Anything else?
Um, last thing, um, tomorrow's an election. I think it is, you know, and I think all the entire members of the governing body up here, and I'm sure you probably are gonna speak on this as well, um, go out and vote. This is the time you have your, the opportunity to have your voice heard at the ballot box. This is your direct access to the levels, the levers of power in the community, and you need to exercise it. If that's, that's, it's just important, it's a matter of course, and hopefully you'll be able to get out to the polls and we'll have a nice big turnout for tomorrow's election. Uh, regardless of who you vote for, go out and vote.
Uh, Chief, I sent you an email th- this morning, Mr. Montagna, I wanna say Montagna, but I might be pronouncing that wrong, uh, contacted, uh, about vehicles getting tagged
Yeah.
On the street. I was wondering if you could speak to that.
Sure. Um, actually, this was brought to my attention last night, um, an officer, um, on midnight, uh, was working in a residential area where there are a number of commercial vehicles parked on the street, um, and he issued their red warning tickets. Um, the idea behind that is just to educate people on what the code is, um, so that they can adjust how they park and where they park, um, and he misinterpreted the language in the code, and some of the vehicles that he, uh, issued warning tickets to were pickup trucks that had decals on them but were not modified, and, and those are not restricted from parking in a residential area. Now, the persons that contacted me directly, um, had a, what's considered a panel van, those are restricted. The, if you're gonna park a van on the street, has to have rear windows and a backseat. Um, not sure how many, um, vehicles were marked incorrectly. Um, I put something out on social media today, um, trying to address that in as broad a manner as possible. Um, unfortunately, the officer that did it over the weekend is not working, or I was gonna have him go out and try to contact individuals, and we will probably address that in the coming days. It was an error on our part, I mean, we have to buy that one, um, and we're addressing that internally.
Okay. Thanks, Chief.
Thanks, sir.
And, yes, I'm going to echo the council president's thoughts. Uh, election day is tomorrow. In Gardner, you get to vote for up to four members of the Johnson County Community College Board of Trustees, uh, up to, uh, one for three different districts of the Board of Education, uh, city council, two seats, and the mayor's seat. And I don't, it's, it's much more important that you vote, uh, rather than, than who you vote for. Uh, we live in a representative government, and, uh, we want as many people to, to vote as possible, so that's your adequately represented. That being said, I'm gonna turn it over to staff and see if you have anything for council. Chief, we'll start with you. Guns?
Uh, excuse me, uh, two small items, uh, the first one is every three years, the city of Gardner, uh, is required to sample the potable water for copper and lead from, uh, thirty locations approved by the KDHE. Happy to report that all samples taken were far below the actual level required by the EPA, and staff have sent letters to residents where the samples were drawn notifying them of the results. So, we're in pretty good shape on the water. And again, with water, on November 2nd, the city of Gardner was presented with a 50-year award for contributions made on behalf of the Community Water Fluoridation, that's adding wa- fluoride to the water. Gardner was one of three cities, uh, receiving this award of excellence, and the award is a result of the dedication to provide water in a consistent, professional manner from our staff at the Hillsdale Water Treatment Facility.
Fantastic. Thanks, Guns. Larry?
I just wanted to congratulate Dairy Queen for their ribbon cutting and for, uh, the nice crowd of people that they've had in there. A reminder to folks that there is still construction going on in that area next door at the Reese Nichols location, which is actually part of that project, and for them to be careful, because there is an entrance being closed on Main Street, and that entrance now at Reese Nichols will be off of white, and that is open, so they can get in and out of the business, but, uh, people from habit may, may want to turn in where there's not an entrance now, so that, that construction is still underway. Uh, foundations are going in out at Hampton, storm sewer works done, uh, so that work's progressing fairly nicely at this point in time.
Larry, uh, we expecting something back on Project School soon?
Uh, yes, sir. The, um, we're having a special planning commission meeting tomorrow night to take care of the administrative plat work that needs to be accomplished, which, uh, has to be done for them to take their next project over to the county for that to be approved, and the, uh, we're still waiting for the building plans to come in for that, to re, to start review on them, uh, but you will have, uh, some additional paperwork, uh, as we go through the project from finance, but it'll be, I don't think it's immediate, is it, Laura? No, it's not immediate, so I think everything right now is progressing as quickly as possible. Uh, there'll be some, there'll be some, uh, planning work and so forth that has to be accomplished, um, that's actually repairs to landscaping for Coleman, that's part of the project because of the change in the landscape location of the building. Uh, the project name of the company, by the way, we, we keep referring to it as Project School, uh, we can call the company now, it's Excelligence is the name of the company, uh, they're a scholastic supply company, and they're located out of California, uh, very well-known across the country, will be a high-quality project.
Yeah, industry leader. Fantastic. All right. Uh, city clerk?
Yes, sir. Michael Kramer asked that I inform you all that the Streets Sidewalk and Stormwater Advisory Committee meeting that was scheduled for tomorrow has been canceled.
Okay. Laura?
I just wanted to remind council and, and inform the public about the IRS audit that I wrote in the Friday Minute memo. You guys often hear me discuss the IRS, the SEC, they're watching, they're listening, and they're out there, and they are, and we had a random audit of some of our outstanding debt, and the repercussions of a unfavorable audit could cause both the investors who hold our bonds to be, um, damaged, whereas their, um, interest may not be exempt from their gross income, and the city could have been penalized had we had a poor audit, and IRS gives you a certain amount of time to reply, and staff replied in conjunction with bond counsel and ahead of time, and then they take some time to decide what they're gonna do, and they send back a form letter said, "Oh, it was all good," and so they're gone. So, um, I don't expect them to come back anytime soon, because I think they found nothing.
I shouldn't say that.
I know, I shouldn't say that, but, but what I wanted to point out for everybody was, they are out there, they do listen, and when I talk about the IRS and the SEC and all those other nasty acronyms, that's serious business.
Yes.
So, um, that's why I do it.
Yes. Thank you.
Good job.
Thanks.
Uh, Ryan Deng, anything from there?
Sure.
Okay. Well, with that, uh, we are at the end. Lee, Lee Moore, you still with us?
I am still here.
There we go, we had, we maintained quorum throughout, very good. Uh, unless there's something else for the good of the order, I'd entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Still moved.
I'm letting it.
Second.
Motion, Moore, second, Melton, that we adjourn, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
As opposed, any abstention, we stand adjourned.
Yeah, I know.
Thanks, guys.
Thanks, lady.
Where are you, Lee?
Savannah, Georgia.
Savannah?